Next thing on the agenda, I have a proclamation to be read. We have two schoolteachers in the house. I don't see one. It came to our attention that this is a day, week, month, celebrating schoolteachers. It's World Teachers Day today. So I'm going to read this and go to the city secretary who will see that schoolteacher is here or something. Anyway, whereas City Rockport's future strength depends on providing high-quality education to all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students, and whereas our Rockport Fulton Independent School District, teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during COVID-19 crisis, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating children, this community, and whereas Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported by more than 150 partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play for the success of Texas. Now there are reports proclaiming that Rockport City Council joins Teachers Can and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers Day, proclaiming October 5th, 2023 to be World Teachers Day in Rockport, Texas, and encourages members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside their homes or businesses the week of October 5th as a symbol of support for our educators. And witness whereof I am here to set my hand and call the great silver city of Rockport, Texas, to be affixed this 26th day of September, 2023. We will get this to the schoolteachers. Next on the agenda, citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience, persons who have signed speakers card located at the table in the back of the training room in the service center and deliver to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Any agenda item or any subject matter can be read at the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council on February 8th using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take any action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace is prohibited not by law, so our Shelby County Chair terminated offenders' time to speak. Before we do that and get around to action items, we will establish the... I look down there and missing somebody. One, not ready. Four, two?
Here.
Four, three?
Here.
Four, four?
Here.
Mayor here, we do have the forum presence. I have two forums filled out. First one I've got is from Mr. Ken Baron. If you're coming up to my phone, give your name and address. You got three minutes, sir.
My name is Ken Baron. I live at 402 Cascades in the Country Club, and I'm here to talk about the same thing I always come for, is that, and that's to get money to resolve the flooding problems within the Country Club. I understand there's no capital money available to work on any projects, but the projects I'm proposing has nothing to do with installing any new piping at all. It has to do with cutting holes in existing piping to let the floodwaters into the pipe and out of the Country Club. That should be considered maintenance. I understand there's approximately $200,000 being budgeted for storm drainage within the city, and we'd like to have our share of that in order to resolve our problems. Now, we have completed one project on Hole 11 for about $800,000, and we appreciate the city spending money on that, but by itself, it does very little to resolve any of the flooding issues. We had no flooding of any houses by Hole 11, and nothing, there was no major flooding issues around Hole 11. What the project of Hole 11 does was allow us to drain areas that flooded upstream of Hole 11. And we need, one of the projects we need to do is cut a hole in a 27-inch pipe associated with Hole 13 Pond and let the water out of Hole 13 Pond. That 27-inch pipe currently operates at 20% of capacity. We have a similar issue at Hole 17, which floods badly. There's a 27-inch pipe there. We want to cut a hole into that, let the water into that pipe so it drains to the pond at Hole 11. And then after we do those two projects, the project that was just completed will actually be beneficial. But until those two projects are completed, that $800,000 does nothing to resolve any of our flooding issues. And in addition to that, we would need to spend some money on cutting a bigger hole into the entrance box of Hole 10 where it feeds the 48-inch pipe that drains the Country Club. That 48-inch pipe operates at 50% of capacity because the opening in that box is just not big enough. We just need to cut a bigger hole in the box. These are not capital issues. They should be considered maintenance issues, and there's no reason we can't proceed with those issues as soon as the money is budgeted for that, that $200,000 isn't budgeted this year. So I'm requesting that you please complete the job that you started, make use of the $800,000 that we spent, because we don't need to spend a lot more to actually make the whole thing work properly and get rid of our flooding issue. So please consider issuing or authorizing the money for those three projects. And you have write-ups on what those projects entail from previous amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Baron.
Thank you.
Also have a card from John McDavid related to drainage on the oil industry in the general vicinity there.
Really just wanted to get an update more than anything about a forgotten area town, which is the old part of Rockport that's probably been, thank God for Guerrero come along cleaning up what they could. And then we have now the problem of, I assume, trying to figure out where the boxes are sealed and everything else, and so that we can stench and dig into the bonding company. But as an old towner, as we lived in that house for all my life, basically in that area, the dust and everything, I'm representing everybody on the street from Arlington Street to Magnolia, it is just a frustrating deal what we're doing with our property because time you paint, do anything, swimming pools, everything, as cars pass by. Y'all have done a pretty good job of slowing traffic down fine in that area, but not everybody pays attention to it. But the other thing that's a concern is the dust and all that stuff and what could be done, whether there could be a temporary fix of a mix that could be applied that the bonding company would allow to stick with the cement or tar without spending a ton of money. But the drainage part, I know that if we have the piping or concrete underneath all that area now, and I keep thinking about what if we get a major flood? And I know it's not, we're getting out of storm season, weird things happen all the time. But if there'd be any way, even though it wouldn't fit exactly, and we'd have some leaks in those concrete connections, but if the connection could be made to the ski base and where we're going to punch a hole through, which I think we have permission to do that now, but if that could be done, at least we wouldn't flood the Presbyterian Church over again, our homes and stuff like that, what we know get flooded in that area. And if we get a major one, it will happen, that's for sure. But that's a thought, whether something could be talked to the bonding company, say, let's just don't cause them more problems. If that's been permitted, then maybe they could take that as a separate, they would fund some money for that towards other... Anyway, just an update. Thank you all for trying.
I have a good one, I appreciate it.
Mayor, I'll have an update on that in my city manager's report.
Okay. I can totally get that when you come in.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be retained by the city council and being enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member submits a request, and which event the item will be removed, consent agenda considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Anyone wish to remove any item?
I'd like to remove number six, please.
Number six. Okay, any other one?
I'm going to approve it to end up with item number six being removed.
Second.
Second.
Have the motion in a second. Any further questions, okay? Now we call for a vote. Four, two?
Aye.
Four, three?
Aye.
Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number six, deliberate and act of utility service agreement by and between City Rockport and Metro Polo LLC regarding property located at 2522, farm market 1069, also known as Lucas' Ranch, block two, lots one and two, and north one half of lots 16 and 17, part of plot 18 being 88.01 acres, City Rockport, Ranji County, Texas, to include pro-rata fees for living unit equivalent LUE for water and wastewater services.
Mayor, council, I don't know, this might be the first development agreement you guys have seen in front of you. This is something new we're doing. If you bring in a new development into the city, you're going to have to have a development agreement. I think we can only do them out. Is this utility only?
Yeah.
Yeah. If you're doing a new development inside the city, you're going to have to have a utilities agreement. That gives you a reservation of your water and wastewater capacity so that we have an accurate count and we can't sell your space to someone else. So that's one of the major things. We typically in the past have just done a pro-rata agreement so that the developer then could get repaid for extra or upsized lines that they put in. That is also in this agreement. And then anything else we ask for from a developer, you will see come to you in a utility agreement, a development agreement, or a special use agreement. But any development coming through is now going to have one of these documents. Be happy to answer questions.
I think you pretty well answered my question. I just wanted to, since this was the first one, be sure that we were talking about it. My understanding is this one's outside city limits unless I looked at it wrong on the map.
Same, it is, okay.
Okay.
Same concept. If you want our sewer and water, we're going to need you to reserve your space. We're only going to reserve it for seven, 10 years, whatever we negotiate. And then if you haven't developed at the end of that timeframe, we have the right to give your space away. So that puts a timeline on a developer, and it gives us the ability to space out our upgrades and things like that.
Okay. Now I'm good with that. I just wanted to make sure this is in alignment with what we've been discussing for our path forward.
So this one kind of was before we started on our new path. I think our LUE fees are agreed upon in here. They are of course going to have a lower rate. I know we've been talking about doing some donations and things like that, but this has been in the queue for a while. We've been, Carrie, you've been negotiating it for?
Seven months.
Seven months. So we go back and forth and negotiate all of the things in here, and then of course it's reviewed by legal before it comes to you. But you will be seeing these for every development that comes in going forward.
No, I think I've probably taken up more time than I probably should, but since this was in queue, this doesn't have the developer fee, but is the unit price, what we just approved?
So you have not approved a new unit price on this?
No.
If I'm...
I'm probably saying it the wrong way.
Right. So we just approved a contract to redo our impact fees, but that is about a six, eight, or longer month process. So we've started that process, but there has to be a committee, which will be the planning and zoning committee. That's not even been, those numbers have not been revised.
Right. Okay. So that's on the impact side. I thought we just approved a new, I call it a tie-in rate. It's not right.
Tap rate, tap fees.
Tap rate, tap fees. So does this include the new fees?
Are their fees?
It's already done.
We had their fees set.
So that was completely before we approved.
Okay. This was agreed to before.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page on that. Thank you.
This one, is it 20-year? Is that really the...
Ten.
Is it 10?
It should only be...
Okay. I thought it was 10.
I don't think we'll ever do more than 10 on a reservation of LUEs.
Okay. I'm good with that. I just wanted something to add to that one, but I'll get back to it now. I'm good with ten.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item number six as opposed to...
Have motion in a second.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any further questions? Now we call for a vote. Four, two?
Aye.
Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, if you can. On to the regular agenda. Item number 24, deliberate and act on second final reading, ordinance granting conditional use permits in purpose of bringing existing RV park into compliance with current city codes and to remodel existing features in the RV park on property located at 1331 State Highway 188, also known as lot one R and two, Coastal Paradise subdivision, 17.989 acres, City Rockport, Ranji County, Texas, subject to compliance with the conditions stipulated within the ordinance as well as those stipulated in City Rockport code of ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for severability and providing for effective date.
Nothing has changed. This is the second reading for their council.
Anyone have a question? Do not have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve item 24. Have a second.
Have a second. Have motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Just like to state again, really appreciate this group coming in and trying to come in compliance with our codes. Because they're really not, I guess they didn't have to. Well, I guess they had to. But they're trying to do everything correctly, and they're actually minimizing some of their spaces, so it's, I think they're doing a good job.
Any other questions? You're stated. Sorry? Call for a vote. Four, two?
Aye.
Four, three?
Aye.
Four, four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, if you can. Look down here, start reading the next one. All right. Next item here.
Yeah, he's ready to go.
Yes, deliberate and amend the city of Rockport, no ordinances, chapter 102, article 102 dash 401, surcharge to increase the $1.35 surcharge.
Thank you. Yes, again, read it. This is not an ordinance, this is just a discussion item. This has to do with the utility bill, surcharge, it's also shown as a fire fund on the utility bills. These monies, these are voluntary, voluntarily collected, excuse me, from the utility customers, and they're distributed to the three Aransas County Fire Departments of Kansas each year, being Rockport Volunteer Fire Department, Fulton Volunteer Fire Department, and the Lamar Volunteer Fire Department. Skipping the history of it, right now, we are charging $1.35 for single unit customers, we're charging $1.35 on each bill for a metered service. And then for multi-unit customers and wholesale customers, there's a charge of $1.35 for each metered connection plus 27 cents for each additional space. There are participants right now, there's about 9,050 single unit customers, 500 multi-unit customers, and zero wholesale customers participating. The, in the fiscal analysis section, it shows what a 1% increase would generate, 5% increase, and 10% increase, what it would generate respectively, if we wanted to pursue this. And again, this is just a discussion item at this point. I know there had been some talk about possibly putting up where you would write, go write in on your bill and maybe collect an additional amount. That would be problematic with our receivables. We do accept checks, people do donate monies periodically, and we do accept checks. They could write a check or pay extra, maybe whenever they paid their bill, if they chose to do so. But just writing it on there and mailing it in, it would mess up a lot of our receivables.
To Robbie, my question is on the breakout of fiscal analysis, where you've got the fiscal year 21, 22, actual, and then the breakout of what it would be for additional revenues for 1%, 5%, and 10%. This is based on the current participants, assuming they would accept an increase or total opportunity?
It'd be on the same folks at this point. Yes, assuming everything's staffing. Good question.
And I should have said this ahead of time, because I'll prepare, but what is, what's going on with the wholesale users? Why are none of them, or wholesale customers, why are none of them participating? Do we have any idea?
It's voluntary. They can opt out.
So the wholesale, so service provider is opting out on behalf of all of their customers? Is that...
That would be right. We don't individually meter those, so we don't have an opportunity to charge the individuals.
Okay.
You want us to make a phone call?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I know that at least one of the systems has recently sold, so at least having that conversation with them, of course, I'm hearing some scuttlebutt about, you know, citizens generally not being happy just because I have property in that area, but I don't know about the others. I think it's definitely worse, the phone call, you know, at this point, essentially they're all getting free fire protection, and I don't know that the residents know that this is an option that they have. Even a 10% increase, I mean, this is a 17, 18,000, less than $18,000 discussion across all our users, it's really not going to make any significant differences, but everybody bring on the wholesale users, it might make a little bit difference. Rather than...
Yeah. No, I agree with the, I realize the wholesale customers were not participating whatsoever, so that would bring in quite a few taps that are out there that can participate. I don't know that it makes that big a difference in the...
I think we'll run into the same problem on billing.
On billing. We couldn't just...
They would have to collect it and then remit it to us.
They would have to collect it and...
Okay.
So they'd have to charge them an annual fire fund, fire fee or something like that.
We'll figure it out.
Discussion. We're getting a hell of a deal for what we pay for our fire fund, you know, our fire protection, the volunteer fire departments. If we were, as city manager, fully street, well, two police streets in here, because the fire department isn't really generating income for the city, and so we're getting a hell of a deal, and whatever we can do to help support those 380, $1.35 hasn't changed since 2006.
2010.
10.
I think 2000.
Yeah.
Yes, 2010, August of 10.
So I know their cost of, cost of operating, everything has gone up, just like everyone else in the room, and we haven't kept up with it. So whatever we can do to continue to assist them without having a detrimental tax, you know, ESD coming to us or something like that, that would be a whole lot more than what we're paying for $1.35. Even if we made $5, you know, the ESD tax would be significant.
We haven't even kept up, even close with inflation for these guys.
Yes, with inflation, it's mighty.
What, 13 years is an increase? Is it crazy to propose something more than 10%?
Nope.
20, 30?
You know, it's, I mean, they get to voluntarily participate, and they have the right to say no. Right. So the only thing is you run the risk that you get it so high that...
That they don't participate.
That they don't participate. But I think most rational people understand that they're getting a good deal. So we just gave you some options. You give us direction, we'll make it happen.
I think a lot of people don't realize we can function with a total volunteer fire department, all around the county, entire county requires, or does require, they are fortunate to have these people. And if you wanted to see something that would have a tremendous impact on the position for this city and the county, you let everybody start paying for a paid fire department, and that would be a tremendous burden on people. I have talked to folks that have moved here in the last three or four years, who were amazed when they found out we have a total volunteer fire department, and we owe those people a whole lot, everyone of them. But there needs to be a way that we see that they are well enough funded, that they can function without having to worry about increasing costs and so forth. Anything we can do to get that donation rate will be of benefit to them. I need to advertise to the people who really don't realize what these people are doing for you, we can do that. We owe those folks a lot. You find ways to board them.
Is there a way to reach out to Rockport Fulton and Lamar and see what, maybe what additional needs, or, I mean, what number that would work with them? I'm sure he's... Are they operating within their means right now? You know, or are they cash strapped at the end of the year because we're not giving them enough?
If I may, it's not for operations, it's really just to help with capital.
It's for capital, honestly.
Yes, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have...
Trucks are cheap, isn't it?
Well, fire department is always going to need a new truck for anything. They're never going to have enough money. So I think that we push out a did you know on fire. We ask for one-time donations at the water department, and then you guys also push up the, 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 the surcharge, excuse me. And we can, we can promote them a little better than we have in the past, and I think that'll be a big deal for us. I think that's something we need to do that could potentially bring in more donations. As far as the fee, we just have to find the balance. We don't know what the right number is, nobody can tell you.
You know, when we do the check presentation, I believe that's October for the proceeding year currently, you know, maybe we can ask them to come spend a couple more minutes to do a presentation of what their needs are and what this will go to. I'm good with moving forward on the 10%. I'm not a big fan of using percentages, you know, let's use real numbers for people. It's $1.35, now it's going to be a dollar, whatever.
Make it $2.
Yeah, I mean, 10% is scary to anybody when they hear that word.
Right.
The phrase, and then you're like, it's, you know, how many pennies?
Forty cents.
I was trying to do my acronym, I was like, no, danger, not do that, not public. And then we also have the newsletter mailer that we do, what, quarterly or bi-monthly in the, with the water bills.
We haven't done that since Vicki's been gone. Since Vicki's been gone, we don't have anybody to do that.
Like how many years?
Yeah, it's been, yeah, that hasn't been done in a while.
Couple of years.
Yeah.
We do occasionally do mailers. I'm more than happy to put something in regarding the fire department.
Do you want a number to that as far as...
Nope. You asked for discussion?
Yes, we have.
And so we're just asking for direction? And if you want to hold off, talk to the fire department, get some feedback, I'm happy with that. If you want to propose a number, he'll bring you back an ordinance. You tell him.
I think we talk about it too much. I mean, we're...
I'm good with $2.
So let's get a number going.
If we just start with $2 and see, and see what that takes us for a year.
That's what I was going to say. I like your idea, just have $2, instead of just scare people into anything, some stuff.
We'll just make an effort to make it part of the budget process to review this every year. Robbie, note. And make sure it doesn't go another 10 years before it's looked at again.
Well, then, for item number 25, I would put...
Don't do anything.
$2.
Sounds good?
Yes, sir. Bring back the ordinance.
Done.
Question?
Thank you.
Item number 26 here, may I have your record?
Okay, a couple of things. You just approved not to have a first meeting in October, so you will have your first meeting in October, will be the 24th?
It's 26.
We skipped 26.
Excuse me, 26?
Let's skip the order.
He skipped 26.
Item 26. I'm sorry.
He skipped item 26.
Item 26 is part of...
No, it should be discussion of roads affected by the general land office.
Discussion of what?
The roads affected by general land office drainage project.
That should be number 29. Nope. Okay, I don't have a 20. 26 on mine is city manager report, go ahead.
Is it not? Interesting.
It was published online.
It's on the same as mine too, so...
So one that was online was a special regarding roads affected by the G.O.O. project.
We need to go with the one that was online.
Online.
Is it the one that was online?
Okay.
I have to read it. All right. Item 26, discussion of roads affected by the general land office drainage project.
See, that's what happens when a council member adds something at the last empty second.
Please, can I go first?
You know, I feel it and I see it.
It's been admonished twice now.
Yeah. Mayor, I had this late, I'll go ahead and take full responsibility for that. The, all the roads affected by the G.O.O. projects include San Anel... The, all the roads affected by the GLO projects include Sabanaw, Sabanaw, Orleans, Magnolia, James, Hackberry, there's some of Ward 1, Ward 2, I'm sorry, Ward 1 and Ward 3, and continue to get concerns from the citizens about the roads. Right now, they're essentially just roadways, and, you know, the dryad's bent, it's just a dirt road, no matter what we do, watering it lasts a day or so until, right now, the drought we're in turns to dust again, and trying to do something for, for the citizens on those roads with the city and everything, trying to help in some way. We just don't have a lot of data to tell me as far as when this project's going to end. So my thought would be to do as cost-effective chip seal as we could to the roads that did one layer aggregated with some oil, to knock down the dust and whatnot. Do we have any cost for that yet?
Yeah, can I speak to that a little bit?
Yes, sir.
If something to be in favor of what you're saying, and I'm not trying to contradict you, I'm just going to give you what we've got. So we talked about doing a chip seal on that. It's not properly prepped to do a chip seal, but to lay it down would be about $40,000. We're estimating about another $40,000 to rip it up when it needs, when it comes time to do it. The bigger problem is it may last a month. That's what they're estimating it would give us if we laid it, just went and laid a chip seal as is. It may not stick, it's most likely going to be on the vehicles, that'll be the best place for it to stick. The county is done doing chip seal today, they can get to us next spring. One of our, our bigger issues is that I have with attorney on the project is if we do some type of temporary fix, concrete or chip seal, are we interfering with the project and do we lose our tender agreement, and how does that affect the negotiations with the insurance company? The, the two big things I think need to be relayed on this project is, we have very little control over it. We negotiate, we get information back, but as far as how fast it moves or how slow it moves, most of it isn't in our control. With the latent defects, merchants has proven that they're going to wait till the last minute before filing a court date to make a decision or to allow for anything, so I don't, I don't think there's anything we can do to speed that up. We do have a good fix, we should be submitting it by the end of this week. However, work is continuing on the project. They're working over behind the church, and now that Concho is finished, Gara has moved their second crew over, so we, right now, have two full crews working on the project. I realize that they're not in the visible street, they're not in Orleans, they're not in some of the Hackberry and some of those, they are working on the project every day. It's crap, we're all in a crap position. I don't have any other way to say it, sorry.
It's not good.
Do not write that in the paper, Mike.
He's got it, wrote it down.
Oh, no, he's got it on the...
Messing, Mike, you're messing.
Just spell my name right. We are all in a horrible position here, and, and to be, to have our citizens in such a, such a mess, and to be completely helpless as to what can be done for them is, is probably the worst feeling I know that I could have, that you guys could have. Our job is to protect them. I know Mike, you know, nobody wants it done more than Mike, except maybe, you know, the people living there, but we are working on the project, we are doing everything we can. We ding dong people every single day, we call people, we email people. You know, can we run the water truck twice a week? We can ask Gara. At the end of the day, it's only going to be money, but we don't know what we can poop up is the bigger issue, because we don't have any money left for, so we've got to be able to get some of it back. That's my sad story. And I'll answer any questions.
We're still at square one, you know, we...
We're no farther than we were when I started my spiel.
18 months ago.
18 months ago, nothing was happening.
Oh, well, true.
Y'all are at a dead standstill. We are moving, there is progress, there's a signed agreement.
So with Gara continuing on the project right now, but we don't have, we don't have an agreement on repairing the latent defects?
There's two options for the latent defects, rip the boxes out or put in a spray sealant. You know, I maintained this whole time that we would rather have it done right than have it done now. The way to do it right is to rip the boxes out, but how much disruption is that going to, is that going to cause? So we're investigating a new product and one that our engineer is kind of pretty competent in. The only, the only thing is, we just have to make sure it's going to take shifting on the, on the joints, and if ripping them out is how it gets done right, this drainage is too important, it's too important to let it go half-cocked or half, you know.
Yeah. I want it to be right. I don't want it to, you can get cheap, well, cheap faster, quick, or keep passing whatever, but I want it done right.
But we're passed fast, so let's do it right.
Yeah, we're passed fast, and it's not cheap.
Yeah. It's, it's more important to me that it be done right, because ultimately, as bad as it is now, when it floods, if that stuff doesn't work, you're going to be madder than we are now.
We messed up your road for two years and it didn't work.
And it didn't work, right. So I continually take arrows for our mismanagement of the project that we don't have control of. It will get worse if we don't do it. So I, as slow as it may go, I am intent on it being done right.
Well, the only thing I have, Councilman, is, you know, my background in dealing with federal disaster recovery and budgeting, we're not behind schedule in the grand scheme of things for some of these large infrastructure projects. We were well ahead, I think, in the aspects with the GLO for these big drainage projects, and we had a lot to be proud of. It's disappointing, obviously, where I, where we're at, but there are communities within and around our area that still haven't even started some of their projects that were related to Harvey, and, you know, we're at six years post-storm, can't sign an excuse for it, but it's just the process. You know, Mr. McDavid and the other neighbors, it is exceptionally unfortunate. I mean, I've got friends that live in that area, love to complain as well, I give them your cell phone number, just because I like it, I like it right, but it is, it is unfortunate, but, you know, I know Vanessa's made progress, but I don't think throwing additional money on a chip seal makes sense when it's not going to solve the problem and make a bigger mess potentially. I've heard of you, it's your, it's your area.
I don't know, I don't have the answers.
I will say that it's probably helpful that we do these updates, though. We ask to stay, just to have you guys out there saying what you are doing, what isn't y'all, or can we be, I'm sorry, frustrating that they're not knowing the whole story.
Right. I had done an every other week kind of update until construction started, then I quit, and then got a massive outcry, so I'm starting those again. It probably will be more bullet points, I'll do something more extensive at the council meetings, but communicating, it seems to be, I don't want to say good enough, but at least, at least we're communicating, and that's, that's satisfactory to a large, a large group of people. And so I'll continue to send out the emails, anybody that's not on the list, send me an email, I'll put you on the list. I think we have about 30 people on there now, so I'll send that out every Friday when I do y'all's update. I haven't added y'all to it, but I will, put council on it. And we're going to continue to push, you know, the bigger part of the temporary fix that I would advise you not making a decision on is until we find out if we're going to myself the tender agreement.
Well, I don't want her to tender.
All of our money is wrapped up in that, and so I would advise you to not do anything until we find that out. It's going to take a little bit of time for Roxy to, to dig through that.
I don't want to, I don't want to harm that process because I don't want to be on the hook for the...
Then I'll give them your cell phone number.
Yeah. Okay.
So we'll continue to communicate. Ryan and I are going to make a trip out. I, I would say we could hold an open house or whatever, but, you know, they, they, we get the complaints anyway, you know, an open forum to complain might make people feel better, but it's not going to change the project. But I'll be on the street, I'm always available, anybody's welcome in my office anytime, we'll discuss it. And if somebody has a good idea, I'm down. Come on.
I was going to, what about the other departments? I agree, I mean, I understand your position, I think everybody, just the communications. But what I do think, we do have a base right now, which is not perfect, but the concrete is underneath there, so if we did get a flood, it would flow somewhere. Right now, it won't flow anywhere. Was in the original project, anything allowed to complete to the bay out there? So if it did, we got this massive six-inch rain or whatever, it may blow up through the cracks, big deal, but basically, most of the water would go out versus...
Right. I'm, I'm not an expert, but I believe they did the tie-ins so that water would flow with the initial contractor. I think that's kind of where they started.
It stops right now.
It stops where?
It stops at 35, there's a 10 by 10 box at 35.
That connects to nothing? I'll move them straight to it. I'll move them to that, I mean, that only makes sense.
That part, I think, if we have to wait a long time, if you have an emergency, because I think people are a little bit worried more about just the flooding that would take place. If we put up with the dust, I mean, I hate to say it, but that's the least of our worries.
I'm going to have to look into it, but, but I'll make sure that we are prioritizing the outfall connection.
The outfall right now, I believe, but I would add defer to Ryan, obviously, because I believe it stops in Orleans and Pat, Pat, P-A-T-T-O, right now, and that's right before it gets to, at the charter bank.
Yep.
The charter bank deal with Johnson House.
Got it.
Before it stops.
I'll find out, there'll be an update in my Friday email.
Okay, great.
Okay.
I know where you're at.
Thank you.
The last thing I've said, is speaking with the residents, the main thing I said is I hate throwing good money after bad, and the chip seal was, is the cheapest thing to do, but if it's not, if it's not going to work, it's not going to work.
Well, first of all, county's not going to do it until next spring.
County's not going to do it, I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to...
I don't know how much you'd have to, yeah.
And, I mean, you did give me a signal to miss work, so...
You want to miss work, I'll handle it. But the general belief is that it will not work, and it will cause more problems for your residents, and we certainly don't want to do that.
John, I would tell you that there's not anybody sitting up here that doesn't understand how upset y'all are, and we don't blame you a bit, and we're, we're very apologetic, I wish we had something we could do to...
I think the updates, you know, I think it was going real good until, as you say, it looks like everything's being worked on, as you mentioned, and that's great, and then sort of a stop, which I think they might start up for streets and everything, if it wasn't wrong or anything, but I think they, what, they really worried about is this flood and asking, I hope to God it could hurt and season without anything happening, but if that could, you know, anything that they could move to punch a hole, at least, if it comes up and blows up through the cracks, big deal, but most of it go the direction of the bay at that point.
Yes, sir. Excellent point.
Okay. The other number 26.
I'm sorry?
The other number 26.
I'll know everything I know, no. The STR, the short-term rental ordinance is done, I've sent it to all of you for feedback, I've gotten some from a few of you, I've also sent it to the short-term rental council, I believe, and we've gotten feedback with them. We are probably close to done on incorporating their comments and any other comments that we think are doable or relevant. Do you guys want to do a 30-minute workshop where we walk you through that before the next council meeting, or would you like it sent to you and you take a vote?
Thank you. We can, so we can talk about it.
Okay, so I'm going to do, can we, if we start at 6 o'clock, does that mess anybody up too bad?
On the 24th?
Fourth?
On the 24th, 4th, Tuesday.
Okay, so we'll start at 6 on the 24th, and we'll take that first 30 minutes and do a STR workshop. Carrie and I will walk you through it, and, and then we'll have the, how about we just do, we'll do citizen input at the workshop, then we will, in the November meeting, we will have the item on there in case there's any revisions to be made, we'll have the item on the November meeting with the revisions from the workshop. Does that work for y'all?
Yes.
We'll be in two reading ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah.
It will be, so we're looking at December to get it. One meeting October, one meeting November, one meeting December, so. Okay, the stormwater group, I know that there's been a lot of talk about when that's going to happen. We had set our joint meeting for the 21st of this month, we've moved that off for a variety of reasons. The group meets on the 10th. We're going to have, David Reed and myself are going to have our proposed ordinances at that meeting. At that meeting, we will rectify the two, and then we will have our joint meeting towards the end of October, and I haven't picked an actual date, but I will. So the joint group meeting will be end of October, everybody will have the ordinance as we, as David and I and, sorry, I don't remember the engineer from Fulton's name, all agree on it. The navigation district will have had a copy and had their chance for an input as well, and then we'll have a joint meeting, more of a workshop, and let everybody get their say. The biggest thing that's going to be coming that's a change for us is we don't include a water quality element, so I think it's pertinent that at this time we add that, so that's going to be the biggest change for us, and you'll see that then. TML next week, I'm out all week at ICMA and then TML, and I'll see y'all all Wednesday, right? All right? Very good. I'll entertain any questions.
Just wanted to add further, thank you for the August financial reports that you provided us that you promised, just want to make sure that's out there that you did provide that.
Sure. You will get them at the end of every month by the second meeting in March. They won't come from me always, they're going to start coming from Robbie, because, I mean, he does them, so.
Any questions over here?
Oh, we don't.
All right. 27, we're closed.
I'm good.
Good.
I guess the only thing I have is, I did go to the chamber meeting last week, they had the voice, the guy who's just the voice of the fence here, the farming ones, and they're asking the chamber to kind of help them, they're remoting to the local, to their community, so there was a presentation, if you guys don't know what's going on there, really taking the, going to learn a lot of these farming companies, they're helping right now, I think, 2 or 3. And then the other thing is, I am having a meeting this week, while the subdivision's coming into my area, and we are having a meeting to discuss, you know, some concerns with the neighbors, so anyone on my board are listening, we are having discussions, we're listening to your concerns and the developer and all around, and if you're listening, so please just hold tight, we're working on it, so just wanted to have that out there.
We're working on it.
Hi, is there, we need an executive session now?
We do, and we can either go back or we can kick Mike in, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, and we can kick these three people out.
State council will open executive session in pursuit to the provisions of chapter 551, in fact, our government code and quarters with authority contained in section 551.07 on consultation with attorneys seeking the advice of attorney about picking or comp completed litigation or settlement offer, known a matter in which the duty of the attorney of governmental body under the Texas District Attorney Rules of Professional Conduct and State Law Text is clearly conflicts with this chapter, Tom Wynn, and all, versus City Rockford Building Standard Commission, docket number 230151 in the 156 Judicial District Court of Orange County. It is 7:20, we're in executive session. It is 7:53, we are back in general session. I have a motion.
Mayor, I have a motion to authorize the filing of legal action...
Mayor, I have a motion to authorize the filing of legal action for unsafe conditions of West Terrace Unit One, Block Three, Lot Six to Twenty-Five, also known as 1201 West Market.
I have a second. I have a motion, second, any further questions, please? Call for a vote, for two?
Aye.
For three?
Aye.
For four?
Aye.
Mayor, I am unanimous.
Let's do it, Jerry.
Second.
I have a motion, second, your turn.